JUST, YOU KNOW, BEING HERE, BEING BACK HOME WAS, YOU KNOW, IT'S ALWAYS A GOOD FEELING TO COME BACK TO SOMETHING FAMILIAR.[64.47][64.47]AND, YOU KNOW, MY FRIENDS THAT WORK HERE, PEOPLE I WENT TO HIGH SCHOOL WITH, AND THEY SAID IT'S A GREAT ENVIRONMENT TO WORK IN.[71.09][71.09]AND BECAUSE I GOT MY DEGREE IN INVESTIGATIONS ALSO, THE POSSIBILITY OF UPWARD MOBILITY WITHIN THE DEPARTMENT IS ALSO A GREAT THING.
IT'S STILL THE FAMILY ATMOSPHERE. I DON'T EVER HAVE TO WORRY ABOUT SOMEBODY NOT HAVING MY BACK. I'VE GOT ALL THE SUPPORT THAT I NEED, ALL OF THE TRAINING AND EQUIPMENT THAT I NEED. I DON'T EVER HAVE TO WORRY ABOUT BEING ILL-PREPARED FOR ANY KIND OF SITUATION I'M GOING TO FACE.
I WANTED TO MAKE THE CHANGE AND COME WORK CLOSER TO HOME, SPECIFICALLY IN THE COMMUNITY THAT I LIVE IN. I WANTED TO TRY AND MAKE A DIFFERENCE AND SERVE MY FAMILY, MY FRIENDS. THERE ARE A FEW OTHER PLACES AS FAR AS LAW AND PORTMENT IS CONCERNED, A FEW OTHER AGENCIES WHERE YOU HAVE SO MANY VAST OPPORTUNITIES WITH SO LITTLE RESTRICTION ON CAPING IN YOUR CAREER.[122.11][122.11]IN THE SHORT TIME OF THREE YEARS, BEING ABLE TO BE PROMOTED TO DETECTIVE, BEING ABLE TO EVEN BE CONSIDERED TO BE ON A SWAT TEAM IS ALMOST UNHEARD OF ANYWHERE ELSE.[131.53][131.53]THE OPPORTUNITIES ARE ENDLESS WITHIN OUR COUNTY.[133.69][133.69]WE HAVE MULTIPLE DIVISIONS THAT CAN BE WORKED WITHIN, AND IT'S JUST AS HIGH AS YOU WANT TO GO, AS HARD AS YOU WANT TO WORK.
HELLO, I'M PAULDIN COUNTY SHERIF GERRY GULLIG. IF YOU WANT TO MAKE A DIFFERENCE WHERE YOU LIVE, THE PAULDIN COUNTY SHERIF'S OFFICE IS ACTIVELY HIRING MOTIVATED MEN AND WOMEN TO FILL OUR RANKS. FOR MORE INFORMATION, YOU CAN VISIT OUR WEBSITE OR GIVE US A CALL AT 770-443-3010. COME MAKE A DIFFERENCE IN OUR COMMUNITY.
TO MAKE YOUR VOTING EXPERIENCE SUCCESSFUL, THE PAULDIN COUNTY ELECTION STAFF OFFERS THE VOTERS OF PAULDIN COUNTY THIS INSTRUCTIONAL VIDEO ON GEORGIA'S NEW VOTING SYSTEM. ALL VOTERS SHOULD BE PREPARED TO VOTE BY HAVING THEIR PHOTO ID OUT READY FOR VERIFICATION AND CHECK IN.[203.73][203.73]ONCE THE PHOTO ID IS SCAN, THE POLL WORKER WILL VERIFY THE VOTER. WHEN THE VOTER IS VERIFIED, THE VOTER WILL CONFIRM BY SIGNING THE ELECTRONIC POLL BOOK.[213.76][213.76]A VOTER CARD CONTAINING THE BALANCE STYLE OF THE VOTER WILL BE MADE AND ISSUED TO THE VOTER.[218.73][218.73]WHEN THE VOTER ENTERS THE VOTING AREA, THEY WILL INSERT THEIR VOTER CARD INTO THE BALANCE MARKING DEVICE.[223.84][223.84]THE VOTER WILL MAKE THEIR SELECTION ON THE SCREEN.[226.65][226.65]VOTERS WILL SELECT "NEXT" LOCATED IN THE LOWER RIGHT CORNER OF THE SCREEN TO ADVANCE THE SCREEN TO THE NEXT RACE CONTAINED ON THE BALANCE.[233.84][233.84]VOTERS MAY SELECT "PREVIOUS" OR REVIEW AT ANY TIME DURING THE VOTING PROCESS TO VIEW THEIR BALANCE OR MAKE CHANGES.[240.29][240.29]ONCE ALL RACES ARE VOTED, THE VOTER HAS THE OPPORTUNITY TO REVIEW THEIR CHOICES BY USING THE SCROLL BAR AT THE BOTTOM OF THE SCREEN.[246.65][246.65]SHOULD THE VOTER DESIRE TO MAKE CHANGES, THEY MAY SELECT "BACK TO BALANCE" AND REVIEW ONCE CHANGES ARE MADE.[252.18][252.18]IF THE VOTER IS SATISFIED WITH THEIR CHOICES, THE VOTER WILL SELECT "PRINT BALANCE."[255.89][255.89]THEIR CHOICES WILL BE CONFIRMED AND THE BALANCE WILL PRINT.[258.58][258.58]WHEN THE BALANCE PRINTS, THE VOTERS WILL SEE A QR CODE WHICH CONTAINS THE SELECTIONS THEY MADE.[263.08][263.08]THE SELECTIONS WILL ALSO BE PRINTED BELOW A QR CODE FOR THE VOTER'S VERIFICATION.[267.43][267.43]THERE IS NO PERSONAL INFORMATION CONTAINED IN THIS QR CODE.[270.97][270.97]WHEN THE VOTER IS SATISFIED WITH THEIR BALANCE, THEY WILL REMOVE THE VOTER CARD FROM THE BALANCE MARKING DEVICE, TAKE THEIR VOTED BALANCE, AND PROCEED TO THE BALANCE SCANNER.[278.72][278.72]THE VOTER WILL RETURN THEIR VOTER CARD TO THE STATION HOST, THEN INSERT THEIR BALANCE INTO THE BALANCE SCANNER TO CAST THEIR VOTE.[285.88][285.88]ONCE THE VOTE IS CAST AND IS FINAL, THE VOTER WILL RECEIVE THEIR "I'M A GEORGIA VOTER" STICKER AND THEIR VOTING EXPERIENCE IS COMPLETE.[293.64][293.64]TO DEMO THE SYSTEM IN PERSON, PLEASE VISIT THE ELECTIONS OFFICE OR CHECK OUT OUR FACEBOOK PAGE FOR A SCHEDULE OF PUBLIC DEMONSTRATIONS.
HELLO, I'M WITH THE U.S. CENSUS, AND I'M HERE TO ASK YOU--
I'VE ALREADY DONE IT. THE CENSUS IS ALMOST UPON US, AND SINCE IT'S THE 21ST CENTURY, I DID THE CENSUS ONLINE.[338.94][338.94]IT ONLY TOOK ME FIVE MINUTES AND I DID MY PART TO MAKE SURE I'M COUNTED.
SHAPE YOUR FUTURE--
START HERE.
--UNITED STATES CENSUS 2020.
HAPPY MARCH EVERYONE.[354.03][354.03]YOU KNOW, I HAVE TO TELL YOU, ELIZABETH, JANUARY LASTED FOREVER.[357.41][357.41]FEBRUARY MAYBE TWO DAYS, AND NOW WE'RE ALREADY IN MARCH.
I KNOW, THIS YEAR IS ALREADY FLYING BY, AND BEFORE WE KNOW IT, IT'LL BE CHRISTMAS.
OH, NO, LET'S NOT TALK ABOUT THAT JUST YET.[366.34][366.34]IT'S ABOUT TO BE SPRING, AND WE HAVE A LOT GOING ON.[368.78][368.78]I'M JESSICA LAORD.
I'M ELIZABETH MCDONALD, AND THIS IS THE PCC.
THE DALLAS THEATER IS PROUD TO PRESENT GOT EVIST, STARING CHAD GIBSON FRIDAY, MARCH 27TH AT 7:30 AND SATURDAY, MARCH 28TH AT 7:00.
CHAD GIBSON RETURNS WITH THIS WILDLY ENTERTAINING TRIBUTE TO EVIST.[402.34][402.34]THIS YEAR BOTH SHOWS WILL INCLUDE THE MOST LOVED OF EVIST'S GOSPEL MUSIC.
GET YOUR TICKETS EARLY AS THESE BOTH SELL OUT.[408.78][408.78]TICKETS ARE $16.
NOW LET'S CHECK IN WITH D. HUNTER WITH OUR PARKS UPDATE.
HELLO AND WELCOME TO PAULDIN COUNTY PARKS, RECREATION AND CULTURAL AFFAIRS.[425.25][425.25]WE ARE EXCITED YOU COULD JOIN US TODAY AT MOUNT TABER PARK.[428.87][428.87]MOUNT TABER PARK IS LOCATED AT 1550 EAST PAULDIN DRIVE, DALLAS, GEORGIA.[433.87][433.87]THIS PARK IS CENTRALLY LOCATED AND IS EASILY ACCESSIBLE FROM ANYWHERE IN THE COUNTY.[438.78][438.78]THIS CAMPUS ACCOMMODATES A VARIETY OF RECREATIONAL NEEDS TO INCLUDE FOUR NEWLY RENOVATED TENNIS[444.03][444.03]COURTS, FIVE BALL FIELDS, ONE INDOOR BASKETBALL COURT, A RACquetBALL COURT, A PLAYGROUND[450.03][450.03]AREA, AND THREE LEVELS OF HIDING AND BIKING TRAILS THAT SURROUND OUR PAWN.[454.91][454.91]WE ARE ALSO HOME TO THE COUNTY'S 9/11 MEMORIAL LIBERTY GARDEN.[459.41][459.41]MOUNT TABER IS ONE OF THE HOME PARKS TO OUR GIRLS VOLLEYBALL AND GIRLS SOFTBALL LEAGUES,[464.78][464.78]AS WELL AS OUR ADULT SOFTBALL LEAGUES.[467.22][467.22]THESE ATHLETIC PROGRAMS ARE CURRENTLY UNDERWAY FOR THE SPRING SEASON.[471.25][471.25]PLEASE STOP BY IF YOU'RE IN THE AREA TO CHEER ON ONE OF THESE EVENTS, YOU WILL SURELY WALK[475.28][475.28]AWAY WITH A SMILE ON YOUR FACE.[477.58][477.58]WE OFFER A VARIETY OF PROGRAMS AND ACTIVITIES THROUGHOUT THE ENTIRE YEAR.[482.18][482.18]FOR THE ADULTS, WE HAVE PILATIES, YOGA, Zumba, AND KARATE.[486.44][486.44]FOR THE CHILDREN, WE HAVE DANCE AND GYMNASTICS AS WELL AS LITTLE KICKERS, SPORTIES FOR SHORTIES,[492.12][492.12]SUPER TOTS, AND KARATE.[493.87][493.87]IN ADDITION, WE HAVE A LEGO THERAPY CLUB AS PART OF OUR ADAPTIVE RECREATION PROGRAMS.[499.12][499.12]EACH OF THESE PROGRAMS HAS BEEN SPECIFICALLY DESIGNED TO MEET THE REQUEST OF OUR CITIZENS.[504.62][504.62]SO STOP BY, LOOK AROUND, AND GRAB A PROGRAM GUIDE TODAY.[508.68][508.68]WE LOOK FORWARD TO SEEING YOU HERE.
PICKETS MILL BATTLEFIELD HISTORIC SITE HAS QUITE A FEW EVENTS COMING UP THIS MONTH.
JOIN THEM FOR THEIR FIRST ANNUAL CELEBRATION OF NATIONAL QUELTING DAY ON SATURDAY, MARCH[525.04][525.04]14TH FROM 10:00 AM TO 4:00 PM.
THERE WILL BE DISPLAYS BY GROUPS AND INDIVIDUALS, PERIOD MUSIC AND SPECIAL PRESENTATIONS.
ON MARCH 21ST AT 7:00 PM, TAKE A GUIDED LANTERNE LIT WALK THROUGH HISTORIC GROUNDS[537.91][537.91]AT PICKETS MILL.
IT'S A NIGHT OF LEARNING ABOUT LEGENDS, lore, AND OTHER STORIES OF OLD.[542.91][542.91]TICKETS ARE $10.
CAST IRON CHEFS GROWN IN DIRT AND COOKED IN FIRE IS BACK AT THE BATTLEFIELD ON SATURDAY,[550.04][550.04]MARCH 28TH FROM 10:00 AM TO 3:00 PM.
THE CAST IRON CHEFS WILL GATHER TOGETHER TO DEMONSTRATE THEIR SKILLS.
COME OUT TO OBSERVE, SAMPLE FOOD, AND PLAY GAMES ALL UNDER THE CANOPY OF SOUTHERN PINES.
FOR MORE INFORMATION ABOUT THESE EVENTS AT PICKETS MILL BATTLEFIELD HISTORIC SITE,[566.12][566.12]CONTACT THEM AT 770-443-7850.[570.66][570.66]NOW LET'S TAKE A LOOK AT WHAT'S HAPPENING AT OUR LOCAL LIBRARIES.
THIS MONTH, WE'RE AT THE CROSSROADS PUBLIC LIBRARY WHICH IS OFF OF HARMONY GROVE CHURCH[583.41][583.41]ROAD AT THE NORTH END OF PAULDIN COUNTY.[585.99][585.99]WE JOIN THEM FOR STORYTIME WHICH HAPPENS EVERY THURSDAY AT 11:00 AM.[590.29][590.29]THERE'S A DIFFERENT THEME EVERY WEEK, SO BE SURE TO JOIN THEM NEXT TIME FOR STORIES,[593.91][593.91]SONGS, AND A CRAFT.[596.10][596.10]JOIN THE NEW GEORGIA PUBLIC LIBRARY FOR A DIY FOOTBALL TABLE MAKING CLASS.[600.35][600.35]THERE WILL BE TWO CLASSES, ONE ON MARCH 12TH AT 5:00 PM AND THE OTHER WILL BE ON MARCH[604.35][604.35]25TH AT 12:00 PM.[606.23][606.23]TO SIGN UP, PLEASE CALL, MESSAGE THE FACEBOOK PAGE, OR SIGN UP IN PERSON TO SECURE YOUR[610.45][610.45]SPOT.[611.82][611.82]JESSICA NORTHROP, A LICENSE COUNSELOR WHO HAS FORMAL TRAINING IN BRANNIE BROWN'S METHODS,[616.39][616.39]WILL BE AT THE CROSSROADS LIBRARY MARCH 19TH AT 5:30 PM TO DISCUSS SHAME AND VULNERABILITY.[621.83][621.83]THE PROGRAM IS GEARED TOWARDS ADULTS, BUT THERE WILL BE A SMALL CHILDREN'S ACTIVITY,[625.62][625.62]SO FEEL FREE TO BRING YOUR CHILDREN ALONG.[627.91][627.91]JOIN THE HIRE-M LIBRARY FOR THE YOUTH SUCCESS WORKSHOP ON MONDAYS, 5:30 TO 7:30 STARTING[632.70][632.70]IN MARCH.[633.79][633.79]THIS IS AN EIGHT-WEEK SERIES DESIGNED TO HELP BRING OUT THE BEST IN YOUTH.[637.41][637.41]STUDENTS WILL ENGAGE IN AN INTERACTIVE AND FUN WORKSHOP LED BY COACH BROOKS, YOUTH MINISTER,[642.12][642.12]LIFE COACH, AND AUTHOR.[643.45][643.45]IF YOU MISS THE FIRST CLASS, YOU'RE STILL WELCOME TO ATTEND, JUST BE SURE A PARENT[646.75][646.75]OR GUARDIAN JOINS YOU FOR YOUR FIRST CLASS.[649.39][649.39]THE DALLAS LIBRARY IS HAVING A PANCAKE ART EVENT MARCH 28TH AT 10:00 AM FOR AGES 12[654.23][654.23]TO 19.[655.35][655.35]THEY WILL BE CREATING YUMMI PANCAKE ART BASED OFF OF YOUR FAVORITE CHARACTERS OR OBJECTS.[659.99][659.99]YOU CAN REGISTER BY CALLING, MESSAGING ON FACEBOOK, OR SIGNING UP IN PERSON.[663.91][663.91]FOR MORE INFORMATION, YOU CAN VISIT WGRLS DOT ORG OR VISIT OUR FACEBOOK PAGES.[673.75][673.75]THE SENIOR CENTER IS PLANNING A HISTORIC BUS TOUR TO JONESBURROW FOR MARCH 12TH.
IT'S $25 AND INCLUDES MANY MUSEUMS, THE CLAVER MEMORIAL, CONFEDERATE CEMETERY, THE[683.41][683.41]FITZGERALD HOME, AND MORE.
THEY WILL ALSO BE TAKING A DAY TRIP TO PONT CITY MARKET.[688.29][688.29]THE MARKET HAS A WIDE VARIETY OF STORES AND RESTAURANTS TO VISIT WHERE YOU CAN ENJOY[691.89][691.89]A DAY OF SHOPPING AND FELLOSHIP.
THE DAY TRIP IS SCHEDULED FOR MARCH 26TH AND IS $10.[697.29][697.29]FOR MORE INFORMATION, PLEASE CONTACT THE SENIOR CENTER.
THE BOARD OF COMMISSIONERS MEETINGS FOR THE MONTH OF MARCH ARE ON MARCH 10TH AT 10:00[704.62][704.62]AM AND 2:00 PM.
AND ON MARCH 24TH AT 10:00 AM AND 7:00 PM.
IT'S VOTING TIME, A BIG YEAR FOR ELECTIONS IS COMING UP, AND IT STARTS NOW.
THE PRESIDENTIAL PREFERENCE PRIMARY WILL BE HELD ON MARCH 24TH.[717.32][717.32]EARLY VOTING BEGINS ON MARCH 2ND AND RUNS THROUGH MARCH 20TH.[720.81][720.81]FOR MORE INFORMATION, PLEASE CONTACT THE ELECTION OFFICE AT 770-443-7503.
TO CHECK YOUR REGISTRATION STATUS, SAMPLE BALATES, OR PRECENT LOCATION, VISIT MY VOTER[732.38][732.38]PAGE, GEORGIA.
MARCH IS LOOKING TO BE A VERY BUSY MONTH.
IT SURE IS.[737.16][737.16]MAKE SURE TO GET OUT THERE AND ENJOY ALL THE EXCITING EVENTS HAPPENING AROUND THE[740.12][740.12]COUNTY.[741.12][741.12]THANKS FOR JOINING US THIS MONTH ON THE PCC.
AND DON'T FORGET TO WEAR GREEN ON THE 17TH.
IN 2019, THE PAULDIN COUNTY SCHOOL DISTRICT HAD MULTIPLE INCIDENTS WHERE STUDENTS WERE[777.23][777.23]IMPACTED NEGATIVELY BY VAPING.[779.38][779.38]AS A RESULT OF THOSE INCIDENTS, THE PAULDIN COUNTY SHERIF'S OFFICE, THE PAULDIN COUNTY[782.88][782.88]SCHOOL DISTRICT, AND THE PAULDIN COUNTY BOARD OF COMMISSIONERS CAME TOGETHER TO FORM AN[786.20][786.20]ALLIANCE TO COMBAT THE VAPING EPEDemic.[788.23][788.23]EACH YEAR, THE PAULDIN COUNTY SHERIF'S OFFICE, THE SCHOOL DISTRICT, AND THE BOARD OF COMMISSIONERS[792.23][792.23]HOST THREE ALCOHOL DROG AWARENESS PROGRAMS IN AN ELEMENTARY, MIDDLE, AND HIGH SCHOOL.[797.19][797.19]ONE OF THE WAYS IN WHICH THE ALLIANCE DECIDED TO COMBAT THE PROBLEM IS TO EDUCATE AT THE[801.23][801.23]ADAP PROGRAM.[802.62][802.62]AT OUR ADAP EVENTS, WE HAVE INCORPORATED A VAPING SEGMENT WHICH TEACHES STUDENTS THE[806.50][806.50]DANGERS OF VAPING.[807.79][807.79]HERE ARE SOME CLIPS FROM THE VAPING PRESENTATION AT POOL ELEMENTARY.[810.66][810.66]SO WHY ARE WE TALKING TO YOU GUYS, ELEMENTARY AGE KIDS, ABOUT VAPING AND THE DANGERS OF[815.25][815.25]CIGARETS AND ALCOHOL?[818.04][818.04]BECAUSE WHEN YOU GET TO BE A LITTLE BIT OLDER, YOU'RE GOING TO BE FACED WITH CHOICES, OK?[823.54][823.54]AND SO WHO'S A FIFTH GRAADER?[824.94][824.94]RAISE YOUR HAND IF YOU'RE IN FIFTH GRADE.[826.62][826.62]HAVE YOU GUYS STARTED YOUR DARE PROGRAM YET?
YES!
YOU FINISHED, AWESOME.[831.12][831.12]I WILL TRY TO BE HERE AT YOUR DARE GRADUATION, BUT WHAT DID YOU LEARN ABOUT MAKING THE BEST[835.12][835.12]WHAT?
DECISIONS.
BEST POSSIBLE DECISIONS, THAT'S EXACTLY RIGHT.
HERE AT POOL ELEMENTARY SCHOOL TODAY WHERE THE ALCOHOL DROG AWARENESS PROGRAM IS TAKING[842.85][842.85]PLACE FOR ALL THE STUDENTS, THE GOAL OF THE PROGRAM IS TO TALK ABOUT THE IMPORTANCE[847.66][847.66]OF MAKING GOOD CHOICES.[849.12][849.12]AND ONE OF THE THINGS THAT'S SO INCREDIBLE TO ME ABOUT THIS IS THE COLLABORATION THAT[853.12][853.12]WE HAVE WITH OUR BOARD OF COMMISSIONERS, OUR SUPERIOR COURT JUDGES, AND OUR SHERIF'S[856.75][856.75]OFFICE AS A COMMUNITY COMING TOGETHER TO TALK TO KIDS ABOUT THAT IMPORTANCE OF MAKING[861.70][861.70]GOOD CHOICES.[863.00][863.00]THIS IS JUST ONE WAY THAT WE COLLABORATE TOGETHER IN SUPPORT OF OUR STUDENTS AND OUR[867.16][867.16]COMMUNITY, AND ON BEHALF OF THE SCHOOL DISTRICT, I CAN TELL YOU IT'S GREATLY APPRECIATED.
IS IT LEGAL TO HAVE A VAP OR A CIGARATE OR ANYTHING LIKE THAT WHILE YOU'RE A STUDENT[875.88][875.88]IN SCHOOL HERE IN PAULDIN COUNTY?
YES!
NO, IT IS NOT.[879.32][879.32]IT IS ABSOLUTELY NOT.[881.07][881.07]WE TAKE KIDS, AND SOMETIMES THEY GET ARRESTED, SOMETIMES THEY HAVE SCHOOL SANCTIONS, BUT[885.50][885.50]IT IS ILLEGAL FOR A STUDENT TO POSSESSE A VAP.
I'M VERY THANKFUL THAT WE CAN COLLABORATE WITH THE SHERIF'S OFFICE AND WITH THE SCHOOL[894.88][894.88]SYSTEM, THE SCHOOL BOARD, IN ADDRESSING THIS ISSUE OF DROG PROBLEMS THAT PROBABLY EVERY[903.66][903.66]COUNTY IN THE UNITED STATES HAS, AND WITH A NEW PROBLEM THAT'S COMING ALONG WITH VAPING,[910.16][910.16]SOMETHING THAT WE REALLY WANT TO WORK TOGETHER TO ADDRESS AND TO CONFRONT.
OUR DEPUTY HAVE SEEN FIRST HAND THE PROBLEMS OF VAPING IN OUR SCHOOL SYSTEM.[917.79][917.79]WE ARE COMMITTED TO WORKING WITH THE BOARD OF COMMISSIONERS AND ALSO THE BOARD OF EDUCATION[921.29][921.29]TO COMBAT THIS PROBLEM.
I TRULY FEEL BLESSED TO WORK IN A COMMUNITY WHERE OUR 30,226 STUDENTS ARE SUPPORTED BY[927.82][927.82]OUR SHERIF'S OFFICE, OUR BOARD OF COMMISSIONERS, AS WELL AS OUR MUNICIPALITIES.[931.85][931.85]THE PURPOSE OF THE PROGRAM THAT'S BEING PRESENTED HERE TODAY AT POOL ELEMENTARY IS[935.44][935.44]GIVING STUDENTS INFORMATION ON MAKING RIGHT CHOICES.[938.35][938.35]I WOULD JUST ENCOURAGE OUR PARENTS, GRANDPARENTS, AND OTHERS TO TALK TO YOUR STUDENTS ABOUT[942.66][942.66]THE DANGERS OF VAPING AND ILLEGAL DRUGS BECAUSE THESE ARE LIFE CHOICES THAT CAN HAVE A LIFELONG[947.88][947.88]IMPACT.[948.88][948.88]AGAIN, I'D LIKE TO THANK THIS COMMUNITY AND OUR PARTNERS FOR SUPPORTING OUR STUDENTS.
SPEAKING ON BEHALF OF THE ENTIRE BOARD OF COMMISSIONERS, ALL FIVE COMMISSIONERS, AND[957.32][957.32]REALLY OUR STAFF, WE ARE TOTALLY COMMITTED MORE IN A SUPPORT ROLE WITH THE SHERIF'S[962.75][962.75]DEPARTMENT AND WITH THE SCHOOL BOARD AND THE SCHOOL SYSTEM STAFF TO COME TOGETHER AND[970.75][970.75]MAKE OUR APPROACH TO THE VAPING PROBLEM STRONGER, AND I LOOK FORWARD TO ALL THE KIDS IN PAULDIN[977.23][977.23]COUNTY HAVING THE RESOURCES TO MAKE GOOD CHOICES IN THIS AREA.
PARENTS, MAKE SURE TO TALK TO YOUR CHILDREN ABOUT THE NEGATIVE CONSEQUENCES OF VAPING.[985.94][985.94]NOT ONLY COULD YOU HAVE LASTING HEALTH IMPACTS, BUT YOU COULD ALSO HAVE CRIMINAL CHARGES.[989.82][989.82]AND REMEMBER, IT IS ILLEGAL TO TAKE ANY TYPE OF VAPING DEVICE TO SCHOOL REGARDLESS OF[993.57][993.57]YOUR AGE.[1000.23][1000.23]WELCOME TO THE MARCH 2020 ADDITION OF PAULDIN POST.[1002.94][1002.94]I'M AUSTIN HEGOOD.
AND I'M Felicia WAMMack.[1005.20][1005.20]WE HAVE A PACKED SHOW TODAY, AUSTIN, SO LET'S GET STARTED. OUR VERY OWN KRISTEN HANDBERRY BRAVE THE FREEZING WATERS AT ROUND TREE RECREATION[1040.00][1040.00]ON FEBRUARY 8TH, TAKING PART IN THE THIRD ANNUAL Polar Plunge.
KRISTEN ENDED UP RAISING $500 FOR PAULDIN SPECIAL OLYMPICS, SO LET'S JUMP INTO THIS[1048.41][1048.41]CHILI VIDEO.
SO WE ARE AT THE THIRD ANNUAL Polar Plunge FOR PAULDIN COUNTY SPECIAL OLYMPICS, AND[1093.00][1093.00]IT IS FREEZING COLD.[1094.16][1094.16]I JUST DID IT, AND AS YOU CAN SEE, I AM FROZEN.[1098.23][1098.23]IT'S SNOWING, IT TRULY IS A REAL DEAL Polar Plunge.[1102.04][1102.04]I AM GLAD WE DID IT, IT'S SUCH A GREAT CAUSE, BUT I'M GLAD IT'S OVER WITH IT, AND I'M[1105.73][1105.73]READY TO GO HOME, IT'S COLD.
HEY, WE'RE HERE AT PAULDIN COUNTY ANIMAL CONTROL.
AND WE'RE MEETING THIS MONTH'S FORGOTTEN FRIENDS, BORIS AND BLAZE, SO COME ON IN.
TODAY WE'RE TALKING ABOUT BLAZE.[1127.66][1127.66]HE'S THREE YEARS OLD, NEUTERED, AND HE'S VERY SWEET, HE'S PLAYFUL, HE'S A GOOD CAT.[1132.73][1132.73]HE DOESN'T LIKE TOO MANY FRIENDS, HE LIKES TO BE ON HIS OWN.
I WOULD LIKE TO INTRODUCE YOU TO BORIS.[1138.54][1138.54]BORIS ALSO CAME IN AS A STRAY ON JANUARY 12TH.[1141.73][1141.73]HE'S PATIENTLY WAITING FOR A FAMILY TO FIND HIM.[1144.54][1144.54]HE LOVES TO PLAY, AND HE ENJOYS ALL PEOPLE.[1147.91][1147.91]WE ALWAYS RECOMMEND BRINGING ANY RESIDENT DOGS TO MEET TO BE SURE IT'S A PERFECT FIT FOR[1152.54][1152.54]EVERYONE.[1153.54][1153.54]IF YOU ARE INTERESTED IN VISITING OR VEING ANY ANIMALS, PLEASE GIVE US A CALL OR COME[1158.16][1158.16]VISIT US AT PAULDIN COUNTY ANIMAL CONTROL, AND GIVE US A CALL AT 770-445-1511.
WE HAVE A SPECIAL GUEST TODAY IN OUR PAULDIN POST STUDIO, SERGEANT ASHLEY HINTSON WITH[1170.91][1170.91]PAULDIN COUNTY SHERIF'S OFFICE.[1172.54][1172.54]HE'S HERE TO TELL US ABOUT A NEW INITIATIVE, THE PAULDIN SHERIF'S CAMERA CONNECT PROGRAM.[1177.04][1177.04]ASHLEY, CAN YOU JUST KIND OF TELL US A LITTLE BIT ABOUT THAT?
YEAH, I'D BE HAPPY TO.[1180.50][1180.50]SO FIRST OF ALL, I'M GLAD TO BE HERE.[1182.16][1182.16]FROM WHAT I UNDERSTAND, I'M ONE OF THE FIRST, MAYBE THE FIRST PERSON TO BE HERE ON SET,[1187.41][1187.41]SO I'M REALLY EXCITED ABOUT THAT.[1189.41][1189.41]BUT YEAH, SO SHERIF GULLIG WANTS TO ANNOUNCE THAT WE HAVE A NEW INITIATIVE CALLED PAULDIN[1193.82][1193.82]SHERIF'S CAMERA CONNECT.[1195.23][1195.23]AND BASICALLY, IT IS A COLLABORATIVE BETWEEN CITIZENS, BUSINESSES, AND THE SHERIF'S OFFICE[1200.16][1200.16]ITSELF.[1201.16][1201.16]AND WHAT WE'RE GOING TO DO, AND IT'S NOT ANYTHING THAT HASN'T BEEN DONE IN OTHER[1204.16][1204.16]AGENCIES AND OTHER JURISDICTIONS, BUT BASICALLY WHAT WE DO IS WE ARE ASKING CITIZENS AND[1209.12][1209.12]BUSINESSES TO REGISTER THEIR HOME AND BUSINESS SURVEILLANCE CAMERA SYSTEMS WITH THE SHERIF'S[1214.12][1214.12]OFFICE.[1215.41][1215.41]AND WHAT IT'S GOING TO DO, IT'S GOING TO ALLOW US TO STREAMLINE THE INVESTIGATIVE[1218.23][1218.23]PROCESS, AND IT WILL ALLOW US TO ACCESS A DATABASE THAT JUST HAS NAMES, ADDRESSES OF[1225.91][1225.91]FOLKS THAT HAVE CAMERA SYSTEMS.[1227.88][1227.88]SO WE'RE NOT GOING TO HAVE ANYONE'S LOGINS TO THEIR CAMERA SYSTEMS, WE'RE NOT GOING[1231.79][1231.79]TO BE LIKE BIG BROTHER, SO IT'S GOING TO BE BASICALLY A DATABASE FOR US TO ACCESS IN[1237.82][1237.82]ORDER TO SEE IF SOMEONE MIGHT HAVE FOOTAGE OF A CROWN THAT MIGHT HAVE OCCURRED IN THEIR[1241.07][1241.07]NEIGHBORHOOD.
SO WHAT WOULD SOMEONE BE SHARING WITH THE SHERIF'S OFFICE?
SO A LOT OF PEOPLE ARE SKEPTICAL OF SHARING ANYTHING WITH GOVERNMENT ENTITIES, AND WE[1248.44][1248.44]DEFINITELY UNDERSTAND AND RESPECT THAT.[1250.91][1250.91]BUT IN THIS SITUATION, ALL YOU'RE SHARING IS THE FACT THAT YOU AT YOUR HOME HAVE A CAMERA[1256.84][1256.84]SYSTEM, BASICALLY YOUR NAME, YOUR ADDRESS, AND THE FACT THAT YOU HAVE A CAMERA SYSTEM[1260.47][1260.47]AND THAT YOU'RE WILLING TO SHARE FOOTAGE WITH US.[1262.41][1262.41]SO IT'S NOT INTRUSIVE, WE DON'T HAVE PASSWORDS, WE DON'T HAVE ACCESS TO ANY FOOTAGE ON YOUR[1267.66][1267.66]SYSTEM UNLESS YOU GIVE IT TO US.
SO WHAT IF I HAD CAMERAS AT MULTIPLE ADDRESSES?
THAT'S A GOOD QUESTION BECAUSE WHAT WE WANT TO DO IS WE WANT, SAY, YOU OWN A FAMILY[1277.16][1277.16]BUSINESS, AND YOU HAVE CAMERAS THERE, BUT YOU ALSO HAVE THEM AT YOUR HOME.[1280.41][1280.41]SO WE WOULD LIKE TO REGISTER BOTH OF THOSE ADDRESSES, SO YOU WOULD HAVE TO DO EACH ADDRESS[1284.47][1284.47]SEPARATELY.[1285.47][1285.47]SO ANYONE THAT MIGHT HAVE MAYBE ELDERLY PARENTS THAT MIGHT HAVE CAMERAS, OR A BUSINESS,[1290.41][1290.41]OR THEIR OWN HOME, OR WHATEVER, WE WOULD DEFINITELY WANT THEM TO REGISTER BOTH OR[1294.97][1294.97]ALL OF THE ADDRESSES THAT HAVE THE CAMERA SYSTEMS.
IS IT MANDATORY?
IT'S ABSOLUTELY NOT MANDATORY.[1300.73][1300.73]THIS IS JUST SOMETHING THAT WE'VE LOOKED AT, AND IT'S A WAY TO HELP OUR DETECTIVES--
WELL, THANKS FOR BEING HERE WITH US TODAY, ASHLEY.[1307.79][1307.79]IS THERE ANYTHING ELSE YOU WANT TO ADD?
YEAH, AND I REALLY APPRECIATE THE OPPORTUNITY, BUT THIS IS SOMETHING THAT'S VERY IMPORTANT.[1313.82][1313.82]START LOOKING FOR THESE, WE'RE GOING TO START PASSING THESE OUT TO OUR DEPUTY'S WHO ARE[1316.44][1316.44]GOING TO HAND THEM OUT TO CITIZENS, SO PLEASE TAKE THE TIME, IF YOU DO HAVE A CAMERA[1320.25][1320.25]SYSTEM, TO LOOK AT THE QR CODE ON THE BACK OF THE CARD, AND ALL YOU HAVE TO DO IS CLICK[1325.00][1325.00]IT WITH YOUR CELL PHONE, IT TAKES YOU RIGHT TO THE WEBSITE, AND WE JUST WANT TO ENCOURAGE[1329.16][1329.16]EVERYONE TO REGISTER THEIR CAMERA SYSTEM SO IF THERE IS A CRIME THAT HAS OCCURRED[1333.41][1333.41]EITHER TO YOU OR AROUND YOU, WE WANT TO BE ABLE TO TRY TO GET THOSE FOLKS ARRESTED AS[1338.20][1338.20]QUICKLY AS POSSIBLE.[1339.20][1339.20]SO THANK YOU AND HAVE A GREAT DAY. JOE SALVATORI FROM PAULDIN COUNTY PARKS, RECREATION AND CULTURAL AFFAIRS WAS RECOGNIZED[1346.94][1346.94]IN USA ARCHERY NEWS FOR HIS PART IN CREATING AN EXPLORE ARCHERY PROGRAM IN PAULDIN COUNTY.[1353.00][1353.00]SALVATORI CREDITS THE USA ARCHERY CERTIFICATION PROGRAM AS THE KEY TO PAULDIN COUNTY'S SUCCESS.
HE WAS QUOTED AS SAYING, "THE TRAINING WE GOT THROUGH THE GRANT IS AWESOME.[1362.57][1362.57]ALL THE TECHNIQUES FROM USA ARCHERY HAVE BEEN GREAT AND GAVE ME ALL THE KNOWLEDGE I[1366.66][1366.66]NEEDED TO GO IN AND BE PREPARED TO TEACH A CLASS."
WE VISITED MOUNT TABER PARK AS THEY KICKED OFF THEIR TRAIL BLAZERS BASKETBALL PROGRAM.
WE SPOKE WITH BRICK GRILLOW AND STEVE CARD ABOUT THIS AWESOME PROGRAM HERE IN PAULDIN[1380.04][1380.04]COUNTY. WE'RE WITH STEVE CARD FROM GEORGIA RECREATION AND PARK ASSOCIATION.[1389.12][1389.12]STEVE, TELL US ABOUT THIS GRANT AND HOW IT CAME ABOUT.
WELL, IT'S REALLY BEEN A TWO-YEAR OPPORTUNITY WITH THE ATLANTA HOGS, AND WE WERE ABLE TO[1396.54][1396.54]MEET WITH THEM, AND ONE OF THEIR CORE MISSIONS WAS TO BE ABLE TO GROW THE GAME OF BASKETBALL[1400.75][1400.75]ACROSS THE STATE.[1402.32][1402.32]IT'S A FIRST-TIME BASKETBALL SPECIAL NEEDS PROGRAM, SO IT'S REALLY EXCITING TO SEE THE[1407.97][1407.97]ATLANTA HOGS WHO HAVE PARTNERSHIP WITH US AND THE FRUITION OF THOSE FUNDS GOING THROUGHOUT[1413.85][1413.85]THE STATE TO HELP GROW THE GAME OF BASKETBALL.
IT'S JUST REAL EXCITING, I'M GLAD, YOU KNOW, THAT THE COMMUNITY IS SUPPORTIVE OF[1422.57][1422.57]IT, THAT WE HAVE A GOOD CROWD, THE FAMILIES REALLY LOVE IT, AND THE KIDS ARE HAVING A[1426.50][1426.50]LOT OF FUN.
HI, THIS IS SANDY CAKER, YOUR POST TWO COUNTY COMMISSIONER.[1442.88][1442.88]WE ARE AT PAULDIN COUNTY AIRPORT, AND WE ARE IN THE HANGER OF JOHNNY JENKINS AND SILVER[1451.44][1451.44]COMET AVIATION.[1454.16][1454.16]SILVER COMET AVIATION STARTED NEXT DOOR IN A SMALL TEE HANGER.[1458.12][1458.12]AS YOU CAN SEE, THEY HAVE GROWN.[1460.38][1460.38]THEY HAVE SEVERAL PLANS IN HERE THAT THEY ARE WORKING ON AND MANY MORE OUTSIDE WAITING.[1466.88][1466.88]IT'S JUST SHOWING YOU THAT THIS BUSINESS IS THRIVING RIGHT HERE AT OUR OWN PAULDIN[1473.75][1473.75]COUNTY AIRPORT.[1475.75][1475.75]WE ALSO HAVE A MUSEUM OF FLIGHT COMING, AND THAT WILL BE WITHIN THE NEXT YEAR, IT SHOULD[1481.54][1481.54]BE UP AND RUNNING.[1483.12][1483.12]WE HAVE OUR FIRST PIECE TO DISPLAY THAT CAME IN TODAY, THEY'RE PUTTING IT UP NOW.[1490.20][1490.20]WE ALSO HAVE THE AVIATION SCHOOL COMING TO PAULDIN COUNTY.[1496.29][1496.29]WE ARE WORKING ON THAT IN THE LEGISLATURE RIGHT NOW, AND HOPEFULLY THAT WILL BE HERE[1501.62][1501.62]IN THE NEXT TWO TO THREE YEARS.[1505.04][1505.04]THAT'S IT FROM PAULDIN COUNTY AIRPORT.
LAST MONTH, EMPLOYEE OF THE MONTH WAS DAVID DAVIS IN COMMUNITY DEVELOPMENT.
LET'S LEARN A LITTLE ABOUT WHAT DAVID DOES FOR THE COUNTY.
MY NAME IS CHRIS WHITE, WORK FOR THE PAULDIN COUNTY COMMUNITY DEVELOPMENTS DEVELOPMENT[1527.88][1527.88]DIVISION AS A SENIOR ENGINEER.[1529.82][1529.82]I NOMINATED DAVID DAVIS FOR EMPLOYEE OF THE MONTH.[1532.38][1532.38]HE IS ONE OF OUR SENIOR STORM WATER INSPECTORS.[1535.16][1535.16]HIS JOB ENTAILS GOING OUT AND ACTUALLY DOING PHYSICAL INSPECTIONS OF VARIOUS COMPONENTS[1539.94][1539.94]OF OUR STORM WATER SYSTEM THROUGHOUT THE COUNTY, DETENTION PONS, CATCH BASINS, DITCHES,[1545.88][1545.88]TO MAKE SURE THAT EVERYTHING IS OPERATING SMOOTHLY, NO DEFICIENCES.[1550.12][1550.12]FROM THE VERY BEGINNING, HE SHOWED INITIATIVE, A LOT OF ENTHUSIASM, WILLINGNESS TO LEARN,[1556.32][1556.32]AND GRASP THE CONCEPTS OF THE JOB ALMOST IMMEDIATELY.[1560.32][1560.32]AND FURTHERMORE, HE TOOK THINGS TO THE NEXT LEVEL WITH THE WAY HE ORGANIZED THE POSITION[1567.16][1567.16]OVERALL.[1568.16][1568.16]SO WITHOUT HIM, WE WOULDN'T BE WHERE WE ARE WITH OUR STORM WATER PROGRAM AT THIS POINT.[1573.62][1573.62]HE HAS FAR EXCEEDED OUR EXPECTATIONS, LOOK FORWARD TO SEEING MORE GREAT WORK FROM HIM.
WELL, AUSTIN, IT LOOKS LIKE YOU'RE READY FOR ST. PATRICK'S DAY.
AFTER WE'RE DONE HERE, I'M GOING TO GO LOOK FOR ME LUCKY CHARMS.
GOOD LUCK TO ya.
THANKS, AND HAPPY ST. PATRICK'S DAY, EVERYONE.
Well, good morning. Good morning, and welcome. At this time, I'll call the Paulding County Board of Commissioners March 10th Work Session to Order, and I'm glad everyone's here. It's proud to recognize Sheriff Gary Gullidge, our elected officials. Brian, if you'd bring that list forward, please. If you've got your phones still on, please silence them. And we, thank you, are delighted to have the pastor of First Baptist Church, Pastor Todd Gaddis, also an author, to come and lead us in our invocation and pledge to the flag. Stand if you're able.
It is an honor to be in your presence once again. I appreciate the invitation, and I do bring a word before I pray. And all the crazy things going on in this nation and the world, I see people caving into fear. And repeatedly in the Bible, hundreds of times in the Bible, God's Word says, "Fear not. Fear not." And the enemy, he wants us to cave into fear. And so I encourage all those just to, you know, greater is he that is in us, if we know Christ, than he that is in the world. And I have one verse to read. It says, "Paul's writing to his young son in the ministry Timothy, 'For God hath not given us the spirit of fear, but of power and of love and of a sound mind.'" So as you all meet, and we appreciate what you do, just remember that, you know, greater is he that is in us than he that is in the world. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this opportunity to meet. I thank you for these folks that are here. Thank you for our Board of Commissioners, Lord, and the work that they are doing. The county's growing, and there are lots of decisions to be made and problems to be solved. Give them wisdom, Lord. Give them wisdom, the wisdom of Solomon, to make decisions as they contemplate all the things that have to be done. I pray for our county, everyone, Lord, our first responders, educators, business folks, Lord, just all around, that you put a hedge of protection. When we hear all this information about virus, we know that Jesus is the great physician. We just pray this would be halted. We know that this is a reminder that you're in control, and we come before you needy and ask that you intervene, give decision-makers wisdom. We just pray you protect folks from sickness and all of the things that are out there in this world. Pray for our nation. Pray for, just guide us now, Lord. Again, we look forward to all the great things you're going to do, and, Lord, we just rebuke fear. We know it's the enemy's tool against us, because we know you have great plans for us. And if we know you as Savior, we're just really here for a short while before we enter into the best life. So, Lord, we pray these things in Christ's name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you much, Pastor Gaddis, and any of you that might get out on Veterans Park and walk. Watch out for Todd Gaddis, because he might run over you. He's out there a lot. Minutes, the February 25th, 2020 Work Session Minutes and the February 25th, 2020 Board Meeting Minutes are available for review. Under Announcements in the Positively Paulding Segment this morning, we have actually two parts. One is the Employee of the Month in March, and then it's that famous polar plunge that occurred here shortly, or recently.
We're here with Judge Altman with Paulding County Juvenile Court. We're here to talk about her Employee of the Month, Sharice Lackey. Hi, Judge, could you tell us a little bit about Sharice?
Sharice has been with us for 13 years. In fact, her 13th anniversary is on March the 6th, so she's just a week shy of it. She has been a great asset to our team. She is our lead trainer for any of our new employees, and she also handles all of our delinquent filing. So anytime there's a child who's accused of committing a crime, she handles all of the filing, all of the paperwork, keeps us up to speed on when the kids are coming and they're going to court, and any orders that need to be done. And she just really helps keep that whole division in line for us. Very knowledgeable. She answers questions. She's very good with the public. She's been here longer than anybody else, and so we ask her, "Sharice, how did this happen? How did this come to be?" And she's usually the one that has the answer.
So we are at the Third Annual Polar Plunge for Paulding County Special Olympics, and it is freezing cold. I just did it, and as you can see, I am frozen. It's snowing. It truly is a real deal polar plunge. I am glad we did it at such a great cause, but I'm glad it's over with, and I'm ready to go home. It's cold.
I love it. Good job, Public Information Team. We have no invited guests. Bid awards number one is to award the purchase of a street power broom to the lowest bidder, Cowen Equipment Company Incorporated, in the amount of $58,643.50. And Ms. Pollard's going to cover several of these bid awards.
Well, myself and DOT. DOT's been very busy spending money this week. So this is a power broom for our staff to be able to use within the DOT. We received three bids, and we are recommending an award to the lowest bid in the amount to Cowen Equipment Company in the amount of $58,643.50. George, do you have anything you want to add to the capability? Nope. Okay, unless you have any questions.
Chuck Hart wants his driveway swept. Bid Award Number Two is awarded to award the local maintenance and improvement grant striping project, Project Number 20018-1505, to the lowest responsive bidder, Tidwell Traffic Solutions, in the amount of $69,579.30.
This bid award, as well as the next two bid awards, are annual contracts that we go out for, and as we put more asphalt on the ground, obviously, we have to put more strapping on the pavement. So this first one is, will allow for some of that strapping, and we are recommending award to the lowest bidder as well. We had three participants, and the lowest bidder, sorry, it's Tidwell Traffic, in the amount of $69,579.30.
Good morning. I'll give you a little background on this. It's actually, it's a GDOT 80/20 grant on this. So GDOT will be providing 80% of the funds. We have to provide a 20% match. So the total cost was $69,579.30. The county portion is $13,915.86. So, and what it is, is basically, it's mostly RPMs to raise pavement markers on arterials and collectors in the county. You know, RPMs are good, especially at night, rain conditions. So it's on these higher-volume, higher-travel roadways. So I'd like to commend our Traffic Operations Division for getting with GDOT and basically providing the information to make this palatable to them to go forward with funding it for us.
Does the paving begin this month?
I'm not going to say when anything's going to begin with the weather, the way it's been going. So I'll just say when weather is accommodating, and once the NTPs and all the contracts and get signed, we'll go forward with it.
Other questions? Bid Award Number Three is to award the 2020 Asphalt Project Contract One to the low bidder, Barto Paving, in the amount of $2,388,034.25.
Again, this is an annual process that we follow to resurface streets within the county, and this one had six participants, and we're recommending the low bid.
Our contracts this year, you know, we had about roughly 30 miles close to it, so we decided to break them up into two contracts, hoping to get better prices, get more competitive bidding. And I believe we did with this case. We broke them up into two, and you're going to see, we had two different bidders. And on this one, Barto Paving was the low bidder. We've worked a lot with Barto Paving. They have a few recent projects that we have, and they've done really good work, and we're satisfied with the results. They did our subdivision paving last year also, and they did an excellent job. It's one of the best rotability subdivision paving jobs we've had in a while. This estimate was like 5.4, our estimate was 5.4, I'm sorry, this bid was 5.4% under our engineer's estimate. So we're pretty happy with this bid and recommend going forward.
Mr. Stover probably knows this, but what plant or quarry is used to get the aggregate?
It depends kind of where they're hauling from. They can use rock mard if they're on the west side of the county. They can use, you know, the south part of the county. They can also haul out of Kennesaw if they want to. It depends, you know, where the contractor wants to use. You know, Matthews obviously owns their own plants around this area, but Barto doesn't. So, you know, they submit the plant that they want to use, and we look at it, and we approve or disapprove.
Thank you. Number Four is to award the 2020 Asphalt Project Contract Number Two to the low bidder, CW Matthews Contracting Company, in the amount of $2,602,345.49.
Part Two to this process, and again, we had six bidders, and recommending award to the low bid.
Again, same idea, you know, six bidders. CW Matthews, the low bid, at $2,602,345.49. And this one, our engineer was way off, was 0.22% over our engineer's estimate. So got to make sure he does a little better next time. But seriously, our Construction Division Manager, David Huff, does an excellent job with these projects, estimating to make sure that we can put out projects that we can afford. Like I said, it's not an easy job estimating projects, I can tell you that. There's a lot to it, and he does a great job. And this one here, it's in Post One and Four, and I should have said it before, the first project was in Post One, Two, and Three.
Tabitha, could you confirm the funding sources for all four of these?
It's going to be a combination of general funds and SPOS for both of those. We've allocated in our current SPOS, $2 million, roughly $2 million each year towards subdivision paving.
Okay, thanks. And is this the first year you've split it up?
No, we've split up in the past. Last year, we didn't. I think the year before, we did. I think there was like four different projects we split it up into. So that one, when we split up into four, the same contractor got every single one of them. So it doesn't always work out in terms of, I think, the competitive process, but I believe in this case, it did.
You could bring David Huff in this afternoon and give him a round of applause.
Yeah, he loves the attention. I'm sure he'd love that.
Thank you, George, Tabitha. We have no reports from committees and departments this morning. No one has signed up for public participation on any of the agenda items. The consent agenda item has a couple of items on their consideration of these items. Need to read them. The encroachment agreement and indemnification and hold harmless agreement with the Senators' Ridge Homeowners Association for the front entrance located on Senators' Ridge Drive Right Away. Number Six is declare the following items listed as surplus and approve their disposal through action or trade. Are there copies of this, Rebecca, in the back? Or do I need to read all of them?
It's on the agenda.
Okay. All right, so we do have an official copy, and I don't need to read all of them. So would any of the post commissioners like to move either of the consent agenda items to regular business? Hearing no one, stay as they are. Under old business, we have none. Under new business, number seven is discuss action to approve the revisions to the Paulding County purchasing policy. Ms. Pollard's going to tell us about that.
It's been a while since we've made very many changes to the purchasing policy, and over the past few years, what we've done is made a change, and it was just an amendment to the policy. So this kind of puts everything in place with a few changes. And over the next 12 months or so, we'll have another update, because we're attempting to automate some of the processes, and in that automation, we'll require some changes here and there. So you'll see this again fairly soon. This particular change increases the threshold from 2,500 to 5,000 to require three bids. So there's not a lot you can do anymore for $2,500. And as you've seen today, we usually spend in larger increments than that. So 5,000 will require three bids. Under that, the departments will be allowed to pretty much approve a purchase for that, up to 5,000 with one quote. We have the requirement in our purchasing policy that we advertise bids over 100,000 in the Dallas New Era or the legal organ. That's not required by law. Law changed a couple of years ago, actually, to only require us to advertise on the web. You just have to advertise for the four weeks. This doesn't change any of that. But it will allow us to put it on the web, and that will suffice for the advertising of the project. Should save us a little bit of money to not have to do those week after week advertisements. We have a little bit more. We have a little bit more automation. As I mentioned, automation of receiving function is changed a little bit. We have taken out and separated the LBE policy from the purchasing policy, because that was done several years ago during the time of when construction wasn't quite as available as it is now. So your contractors are busier, and they're not as interested, and so they haven't maintained their status on LBE. We've had a lot that have dropped off of that, and the need hasn't presented itself. However, the policy is still in existence. If we want to make it a policy, make it part of the purchasing policy, we can add it back at any time. And those are the changes for today, unless you have any questions.
So I've said before, we use a lot of acronyms. For purpose of the audience, what LBE is?
LBE is Local Business Enterprise, Local Business Enterprise Policy, and that was specifically to encourage local business. This does not insinuate in any way that we don't encourage local business, because we reach out a lot of times to our local businesses to get them to participate in the bid process. So that doesn't change that at all. This just eliminates the need for that local business to maintain their LBE status for bidding.
Other comments? I think this is a good example for the purpose of Comcast and Channel 23. It's another example of where our department heads bring forward something that needs to be changed, and there are many others in the hopper right now that I'm excited for us to work together on. But Jimmy Renfro has 75-plus buildings to get bids on for various upgrades.
135.
How many?
135.
Wow. Way underestimated. But this'll, just one example, and before the meeting, I was talking to several other department heads back there, like Parks and Rec, so they won't have to spend just a huge amount of time trying to get all the bids in. So I'm real proud to pass this through, or hopefully, it'll pass this afternoon. Any other comments? New business number eight is discuss action to approve the development agreement between the Paulding County Industrial Building Authority and Paulding County for extension of the East Hiram Sewer from State Route 92 to Laird Road. Ms. Laurie Ashmore to present.
Good morning. The Industrial Building Authority has property along Bill Caruth Parkway between Laird Road and Nebo Road, and sewer service is going to be required for business to locate in that area. Downstream of that, we have an East Hiram Sewer project that is ongoing and under construction. It has been sized to continue providing sewer service in that Licklog Basin up to that project and for additional development. We have, we're bringing this development agreement to you today with an estimate of a 3,200-foot, 12-inch sewer line being extended up from Highway 92 along Licklog Creek to Laird Road to the southeast corner of the IBA property. The development, the Industrial Building Authority would fund 50% of the cost of this sewer line. Water renewal and extension funds would do 25%, and the general fund is proposed also to do 25%. We would do this as a change order to our existing design-build contract with John D. Stevens in order to expedite that project, and it could be constructed in the same time period that we're working on the East Hiram Sewer.
So will you speak also about not having the requirement to remobilize equipment?
It's actually one of the efficiencies that's created here. We anticipate being able to get the sewer line designed and constructed in that same timeframe that we're constructing East Hiram, so we wouldn't have a contractor having to come back, or even if it was John D. Stevens leaving the job and then having to remobilize to come back. So doing it on this schedule provides county efficiencies in cost.
Thank you. Any comments? I would like to recognize Robert Kraus, who's the interim Industrial Building Authority Executive Director. Robert, raise your hand in case people don't know you. So he's worked with us on this and is on board with us in making this happen. That's the conclusion of our regular business. No one who's signed up to speak on non-agenda items. I always love to recognize people, and it's wonderful to have in our boardroom here this morning Pastor Johnny McBurroughs. He keeps us lifted up in prayer on a daily basis, and I know it helps me. But glad to have all of you here, and we do have a requirement to go into executive session for pending and potential litigation, so I'd entertain a motion to do that.
I'll make that motion, Dave.
Motion by Commissioner Davis, or second?
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Kaker. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will adjourn to executive session.